Good evening. It is seven P M on Tuesday, February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. Like to call the Richland County Council zoning public hearing to order. Adam Clark.
Brenham?
Here.
Pugh?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Livingston? Teresa?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Aline?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is additions or deletions to the agenda. Director, do you have any?
No ma'am, we don't really have any additions or deletions to the agenda, but I just wanted to point out under the MAP amendments that you may note that some of them reference staff recommendations and others reference comprehensive plan and whether they be compliant or non-compliant. The ones that still reference staff recommendation were carryovers from last year. And so we wanted to be consistent as to what was presented to the planning commission. However, going forward, we will be identifying those as comprehensive plan and whether they're compliant or non-compliant. And mainly, that was to kind of be a little more clear to the public that these are not staff's recommendations because the thought was that staff was making, sitting around making decisions as to whether this something should be approved or not, rather than actually showing, we would just identify what the comprehensive plan stated for the particular request.
Thank you, Director Price, for that clarification. Also, since you brought that up, just for the record, can you just speak to the fact that we are currently going through a comprehensive plan update process?
Yes, um, thank you. As required by state law, every ten years, there should be an update to the comprehensive plan. Our last comprehensive plan was done in two thousand fifteen, so we're at a ten-year window to make any updates. Currently, we have identified a consultant is working with staff and we've been having community meetings. We're also available if you feel that there's communities that you want us to come and speak to or present these on. And going forward, I'm trying to think where we are right now. We've gone through the first phase of the comprehensive plan. We had a couple of meetings just to identify what some of the thoughts were from the communities as to how the direction they would like to see growth occur. And now we would then work with our consultant. And going forward, we will now put a lot of those together so we have a little more of a document to present to them to get their feel with regarding this. And we will also be meeting with council members, hopefully, to talk about you, more particularly your specific areas and your thoughts on those. But again, we will still be going back out into the communities to bring that information directly to them.
Thank you so much, Director Price, for that overview. Next is item four, withdrawals and deferrals. Do we have any withdrawals or deferrals this evening?
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
Thank you. Before I give, I have several that I will be issuing for deferral. And I'm going to be real specific so that if we have any neighbors here in the in the audience tonight, that we don't waste your time to note, but I am deferring the public hearing as well, which that means that if you came with the idea to speak for or against, you won't have that opportunity tonight, but I will be deferring all of these items to next month's meeting. And the thought is that we have several that just need a little bit more time to have conversations with the neighbors to make sure that the applicant understands the community that they're coming into, as well as the neighbors understand what it is being proposed to being built. And we've had several town hall meetings, but at the request of many of the neighbors and the neighboring subdivisions, I'm moving to defer, and I'll go ahead and list them, and I'll list what if it's okay. I won't list the case number, but I will list the address because I think it's more helpful for those who are here today. And that's item seven, which is one zero one four one Wilson Boulevard. Item fifteen, which is eight hundred Mount Valley Road, as well as item sixteen, which is seven hundred Mount Valley Road. And item eighteen, which is five twenty Todd Branch Drive. And again, all of these items are being deferred until next month's meeting. And in the interim, we will be reaching out to the neighbors to have additional meetings to continue the conversation. Move to defer those four items.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a deferral of the four items. One, seven, fifteen. Sorry, excuse me, seven, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen. Any discussion? Adam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Li- Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved to be deferred.
Do you have any other withdrawals or deferrals for this evening? Adam Chair. You recognize, Ms. Newton?
I do have an item that I plan to defer, but I would like to ask first if anyone has signed up for the public hearing for item number six on Starling Goodson Road.
Item number six is case number twenty-four dash zero five one. If you give us just a minute, Vice Chair Pugh will be able to check that signup sheet. Is number twenty-four dash zero five one.
Move to defer item six to our next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the four, deferral of item six. Any discussion?
I'll just repeat that it's the property on Starling Goodson Road.
I'm sorry, sir. We're in the middle of a meeting right now, so if you could speak to a staff member if you have a question. Adam Clark, can you?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Any other referrals, excuse me, withdrawals or deferrals? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item five, adoption of the agenda.
Who to approve as amended?
Second. A motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Adam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. First is item six, a one, excuse me. Case number twenty-four dash zero two one M A. Heather Ellenbaum, light industrial to residential four. Seventeen twenty-three Hardest Scrabble Road and North South Hardest Scrabble Road. T M S R one seven three zero one dash zero one dash zero one and zero two. R one seven three zero two dash zero one dash zero one and zero two. Planning Commission recommends approval, staff recommends approval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone that signed up to speak this evening?
Adam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you, this public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
So the items that are left on the agenda that represent District Seven, I'll just go ahead and make my blanket statement now that way I don't have to do it for each one of them. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank every applicant that we will take up tonight for participating in town hall meetings with the neighbors of District Seven. It's become my custom and I appreciate them going the extra mile to have conversation with the neighbors and all of, again, all the applicants have done so. And so with that, tonight, for item number one, I move to approve case number two four zero two one.
A motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item two, case number twenty-four dash zero three eight M A. Madison Pickle, residential two to residential three, four two four Raven Road. T M S R one seven two zero nine dash zero one dash zero two. Planning Commission recommends approval, staff recommendation is approval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up this evening?
Adam Chair, no one signed up to speak for this item, ma'am.
This public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
I move to approve case number two four zero three eight.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, case, item three, case number twenty-four dash zero four three M A. Crystal Martin, residential four to light industrial. One zero five three nine Farrow Road. T M S R one seven five zero zero dash zero two dash one eight. Planning Commission recommends approval, staff recommends approval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Adam Chair, no one signed up to speak for this item.
This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You recognize, Vice Chair Pugh?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item four, case number twenty-four dash zero four four M A. Jean Pierce, agricultural district to Homestead District. Fifteen nineteen and fifteen twenty-five Hardest Scrabble Road. T M S R one four six zero zero dash zero three dash six three and R one four six zero zero dash zero three dash two five. Planning Commission recommends approval, staff recommendation is disapproval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do anyone sign up to speak this evening?
Adam Chair, we have the applicant, Mr. Jean Pierce. Jean? Sir, if you could approach the podium, you have two minutes to speak. And could you ask, could you state your name and address and you have two minutes to speak, sir?
Thank you. My name's Jean Pierce, address is four thirty-six Running Fox Road West, Columbia, South Carolina, two nine two two three. I'm just here, if there's discussion or questions that need to be answered, I'm happy to answer them, but I don't think I have anything to add at this moment, so thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
Thank you. Before I make my motion, I just want to say publicly to Mr. Pierce that I had opportunity to talk to the neighbors in between the meeting and we do want to meet with you one more time, but we're going to move forward with the vote tonight. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number two four zero four four.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item five, case number twenty-four dash zero four seven M A. Todd Corley, neighborhood mixed use and residential five to general commercial. Bluff Road, Blair Road and North South Blair Road. T M S R one 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 five dash zero four dash zero six, zero seven and zero eight. Planning Commission recommends approval, staff recommends disapproval. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak, that's the applicant, Mr. Todd Corley. Mr. Corley? Sir, if you can approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, my name is Todd Corley, my address is five oh three Lucius Road, Columbia, South Carolina. Our family business requesting a zoning change to general commercial for a three acre parcel of land on the corner of Bluff and Blair Road, about three miles from Williams Price Stadium. We are proposing construction of a car wash, laundry mat facility similar to the one that we have been operating at thirty-five seventeen Broad River Road for the past seventeen years. We believe it would be a positive, well-needed addition to the Bluff Road community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
Adam Chair.
This public hearing is now closed. You recognize, Councilman English?
Thank you, we had our zoning hearing, well, zoning meeting last night at town hall and the neighbors expressed some of the same concerns that I did, but no real negative, anybody coming against it. The biggest thing is just to make sure that we have the buffer there. He addressed many of the questions. There will be sewer to work with the drainage and all of those things so we don't have to worry about chemicals in the atmosphere or in the groundwater or anything. So at this time, we move to approve.
A motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Adam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item eight, case number two four dash zero five four M A. Brian Harbison, residential transition to residential two, two zero nine Summer Haven. T M S R zero one three one two dash zero two dash zero two. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan is non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Adam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak, that's the applicant, Mr. Harbison. Sir, if you could approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, Brian Harbison, two zero nine Summer Haven Drive, Chayton, South Carolina, two nine zero three six. Requesting rezoning specifically just to shrink the setback slightly. I've held my neighbors sign of approval, met with the councilman. Actually put a deed restriction when we bought the property that we would not subdivide it to increase density. That's what we're trying to do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harbison. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you, this public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
Councilman Brenham, you recognized.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item nine, case number twenty-four dash zero five six M A. Philip Bradley, residential transition to residential five, seven three seven Ross Road. T M S R one seven one one two dash zero one dash zero two and R one seven one one two dash zero one dash zero three. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan, non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak, that's the applicant, Mr. Phil Bradley. Mr. Bradley, if you can approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Good evening, my name is Phil Bradley, four zero five Western Lane, Ermo, South Carolina. We are requesting this rezone because these three parcels are contiguous to our parcel behind that, that we are actually in the middle of designing a town hall project. So the R five zoning would allow us to incorporate those three parcels into the townhomes. And I guess, can I go ahead and address number ten as well, because that's me as well? No? Okay. So anyway, that's why we're requesting that zone change.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you, this public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
I move to approve case number two four zero five six.
Motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item ten, case number twenty-four dash zero five seven M A. Philip Bradley, Homestead to residential three, seven four seven Ross Road. T M S R one seven one one two dash zero two dash zero one. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan is compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak, and that's the applicant, Mr. Phil Bradley. Mr. Bradley, if you can approach the podium once again, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you again, Phil Bradley, four zero five Western Lane, Ermo, South Carolina. This rezone is being requested on the other side of Ross Road. Currently, there is a single family detached house that joins this property or is contiguous to this property. So we feel that single family detached product would be appropriate for that side of the Ross Road. I think it will add variety to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Councilman Baron?
Move to approve case number two four zero five seven.
Second. Motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item eleven, case number twenty-four dash zero five eight M A. Phil Mauberry, agricultural district to Homestead District. Eight one two Sandfield Road. T M S R one seven eight zero zero dash zero one dash one three. Planning Commission recommends approval, comprehensive plan is non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Adam Chair, no one signed up to speak for this item?
This public hearing is now closed.
Adam Chair.
You recognize, Vice Chair Pugh?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Motion and a second for approval, any discussion? Madam Clark?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item twelve, case number twenty-four dash zero five nine M A. Joanne Williams, residential six to residential two, three nine three one Baldwin Road. T M S R one four one zero three dash zero three dash one zero. Planning Commission recommends disapproval, comprehensive plan is non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have three people that signed up to speak. We have the applicant, Joanne Williams. Ms. Williams, could you please approach the podium? And then we also have two persons signed up that's against it.
I live at fifteen forty-seven Bluebird Lane. And the property in question is thirty-nine thirty-one Baldwin Road. It's at the intersection of Bluebird Lane and Baldwin Road at the corner. And the other night at the planning meeting, a person who owns property adjacent to mine spoke against it. He said that he had brought litigation against me. So he, I have the lot that's we're talking about tonight and other lots down. And this is a long, almost four acres of property, and his property is on the other side of that. He has built an embankment all along the property. It's made of sand and deconstruction rubble, and it rises twelve feet above the natural landscape, and there's a chain link fence at the top. And he did not like me digging on my side of the property, and that's what the litigation was about. And the law went totally against him, and so I thought the matter had been put to rest, but recently, he's brought the same issue up again. So I've had to hire the Kalason Law Firm to counter sue. But I found out, well, one other thing, is that when I first got property on Bluebird, he had a gate at the end of the fence that's up close to the intersection of Baldwin and Bluebird. And the gate was there where he was going back and forth. And after I got property, he quit doing that. But it would be perfectly fine with me if he opened that gate and went to and from his property that way because it is totally more convenient, and it would just cut across just a little bit of the property. So that may be one of the original grievances, I don't know. The other, another issue he brought up was the deed.
Ms. Williams, that's your time, ma'am, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have, if I butcher your name, I apologize, but it looks like Trish Kim. Ms. Kim, if you can, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
I'm here to speak with Larry Pyle, who's the next.
One at a time.
I'm Trisha Kim. My address is four-seven-two-five Alpine Road, Columbia, two-nine-two-two-three. And I am here with Larry Pyle, who is the owner of the adjacent property. I have, his, the concerns are that residential doesn't, doesn't comply with the rest of the zoning around this property. So that is the, that's one of the main issues. The other issues are something totally different. Basically, though, it is not in compliance. There's commercial and, I'm not commercial, there is commercial. There's also multifamily, high-density properties surrounding this lot. So that's the main issue that we wanted to just bring to the attention. It was, I think, disapproved from the Planning Commission, and so we're just here to see it through. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Mr. Larry Pyle? Sir, if you could approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
My name is Larry Pyle, P-Y-L-E, and I live at number two Bee Haven Road in Columbia, South Carolina. And I own the adjoining property to Mrs. Williams. I have thirty acres there. And my piece of property has been used for several things that were to the advantage of Richland County. One, I have a licensed landfill, and I allowed Richland County Council to tear down the old courthouse that was here where we're sitting. I allowed them to dump that courthouse at my property, and I saved Richland County a million and a half dollars by not charging them a dime to dump the courthouse on that property. And in the process of doing that, Richland County engineer was in charge of stabilizing the embankment for the dumping of the courthouse, and the Columbia Hospital, which adjoined the courthouse behind the courthouse, was also dumped there at no charge to the county. Then I was asked by Leon Castles and John Monroe to donate twenty thousand yards of dirt off of the good portion of my property to help build the cancer hospital for Richland County, and I did that at no charge to the county. And the embankment that is on the property was completely engineered by Ralph Pearson and Gordon Green, the county engineer and the assistant engineer. And that, that embankment was totally stabilized at their discretion, and Mrs. Williams completely removed the stability of the property by taking the dirt off of her side.
Mr. Pyle, that's your time, sir.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
And the state of South Carolina has a conservation easement on that property.
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item, ma'am.
This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You recognize, Councilwoman Little?
I have spoken with, both parties, I've spoken with Ms. Williams as well as Mr. Pyle, and I respect both of their views. However, approval would align with the existing character and development patterns of the immediate surroundings, including areas along Bluebird Lane, Fonta Vista Road, and Baldwin Road. I make a motion to approve this request.
Motion is second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item thirteen, case number twenty-four dash zero-six-zero MA. Marco Sarabia, Residential Six to Residential Two, seventeen-eleven Bluebird Lane and ten thirty-nine Bluebird Drive, TMS R one-four-one-zero-four dash zero-four dash three-eight, and R one-four-one-zero-four dash zero-four dash three-nine. Planning Commission recommends disapproval. Comprehensive plan is non-compliant. Vice Chair, excuse me. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have one person sign up to speak. That's the applicant, Mr. Marco. Sir, if you could come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak.
Hello, how are you? My name is Marco Sarabia, and I live in on twenty-nine twenty-eight Alpine Road, twenty-nine-two-two-three, Columbia, South Carolina. And I want to say thank you to take your time to take care of my case, and my request is like, give me the opportunity to build a single-family house on this zoning, R six, to move it to R two, and pass all I asking for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. You recognize, Councilwoman Little?
I've also spoken with Mr., I do not want to butcher your name. I make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
Motion is second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fourteen, case number twenty-five dash zero-zero-one MA. Donald E. Lovett, Residential Two to General Commercial, North Brickyard Road, twelve-oh-one and twelve-fifteen North Brickyard Road, thirty-five-seventeen and thirty-five-twenty-five Hardscrabble Road, TMS R one-seven-three-zero-zero dash zero-six dash one-zero, R two-zero-one-zero-zero dash zero-five dash zero-one, R two-zero-one-zero-zero dash zero-five dash zero-two, R two-zero-one-zero-zero dash zero-five dash zero-four, R two-zero-one-zero-zero dash zero-five dash zero-five, and R two-oh-one-zero-zero dash zero-five dash zero-eight. Planning Commission recommends approval. The comprehensive plan states non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Madam Chair, we have four people signed up to speak. We have the applicant, Mr. Donald Lovett, and three other people that are for it. Mr. Lovett, if you could approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
My name is Donald E. Lovett. I live at seventy-five fifty Ermo Drive, Columbia, South Carolina. I grew up on my Lovett family's approximately two-hundred-acre farm in Keene, South Carolina. The farm extended from Hardscrabble Road to Clemson Road. There were nine children in my family. My father, mother, and seven of my brothers and sisters are all deceased. Only my sister Jackie Lovett, hence, and I are still alive. My sister Jackie currently lives in a nursing facility. Jackie's house on her two acres on Hardscrabble Road is vacant. There are only two houses on this eleven-point-seven-two acres. The two houses belong to my sisters Jackie and Gwen. My deceased sister Gwen's home on her two acres on North Brickyard Road is currently rented month-to-month for a children's daycare facility. The additional seven-point-seven-two acres is vacant land, which is controlled by my signature. We want to sell this combined acreage to Meyer Blading Investments for a grocery store, which will serve as an anchor for other smaller retail establishments on this property. My sister Gwen's two children, Jennifer and Troy, as well as my sister Jackie's two children, Byron and Kevin, are in agreement with this rezoning request. February third, twenty-twenty-five, Richland County Planning Commission unanimously approved general commercial zoning for our combined eleven-point-seven-two acres. On February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, a councilperson in Richmond Baron's Town Hall Meeting, no one opposed our general commercial rezoning for this property. On behalf of my family, I request that Richland County Council approve general commercial zoning for our combined eleven-point-seven-two acres. Thank you for consideration of this rezoning request.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Next, we have Mr. Toby Ward. Mr. Ward, if you could approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Toby Ward. I live at thirty-twelve Glenwood Place here in Columbia. Have the pleasure of representing Mr. Lovett. I just want to say a couple of things to confirm the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the results of the town hall. First of all, this eleven-point-seven-two acre parcel is an assemblage of the family property, but it's served by existing public water, public sewer, natural gas, and three-phase electric power, so it's development-ready. Second of all, the twenty-fifteen comprehensive plan says in connection with consideration of a project like this that non-residential development may be considered for location along a main road corridor. And we believe that this newly widened Hardscrabble Road, as well as the signalized intersection with North Brickyard Road, meets that criteria. The comprehensive plan also says non-residential uses should be designed to be easily accessible to surrounding neighborhoods. And there are nine surrounding subdivisions. I won't go through the list of them. But Hardscrabble Road, as I said, is now five lanes, and Brickyard is a two-lane, and it's got two turning lanes. And there's an existing traffic signal. So we don't believe that traffic's going to be drawn from outside areas to this parcel, so we ask that you please rezonate this property to GC. Thank you very much. Be glad to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next, we have Mr. Terry Taylor. Mr. Taylor, if you can approach the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Good evening. My name is Terry Taylor. Address is three hundred Colonial Center Parkway, Roswell, Georgia, three-zero-zero-seven-six. I'm the president of Mirabellan Investments. We're the developer for this project. We're based in the metro Atlanta area, founded Mirabellan Investments in two thousand and five, but I've been in the real estate, commercial real estate business in some form or fashion since nineteen eighty-six. Prior to that, I was a practicing professional civil engineer. At Mirabellan, we have developed and owned several different types of commercial real estate properties, but we've always concentrated on developing first-class neighborhood retail projects, including grocery-anchored properties. We call these properties necessity retail because they provide goods and services that are truly necessary for the day-to-day lives of the families that live in the neighborhoods where our projects are located. Many of our developments have been located at the front door of large, high-end neighborhoods, including gated communities and golf course communities. Our plan for the subject properties, develop it in the first-class retail project, possibly grocery-anchored, anchored by a grocery store. We intend to abide by the same high standards for the design, construction, and operation of the property that we've always followed. Our goal is to provide high-quality retail development that the neighbors who live in the surrounding areas can benefit from and be proud to have in their community. And I believe Mr. Ward went over the comments on the staff report. That's all I have. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Timothy Wingate, or Wingard, I apologize. Mr. Wingard, if you could come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
My name is Tim Wingard. I live at twelve-zero-eight North Brickyard Road, Columbia, two-nine-two-two-three. My house is right across the road from this property. I see nothing wrong with it. I think it'd be an asset to the area. I've been there eighty years, and it's better than the cotton field that was over there when I was growing up. I think, I think it'd be better, a grocery store, so I appreciate it if y'all would approve this.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
Thank you. This public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair.
You recognize, Councilwoman Baron?
I've got to get myself together. You made me laugh once again. I heard him say it before, but it's still funny. I'd like to move to approve case number two-five-zero-zero-one.
Motion is second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item seventeen, case number twenty-five dash zero-zero-four MA. Carol Crooks, Agricultural District to Homestead District, six-two-four Langford Road, TMS R two-zero-six-zero-zero dash zero-one dash zero-four. Planning Commission recommends approval. Comprehensive plan is non-compliant. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair, do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening?
Ma'am, we have two people sign up to speak. The applicant, Carol Crooks, and one person for it, and all I could make out was the last name is Woods.
Actually, that was me, Councilman Pugh, Toby Ward.
Okay. I got you.
And I'll speak for Ms. Crooks also.
Nope. Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine.
I'm Toby Ward. I live at thirty-twelve Glenwood Place, and I represent Ms. Crooks. We ask that you approve this rezoning request. It was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. And what we're doing here is actually downzoning because the, the new zoning classification would allow less development than the current zoning. It'll remain residential. There's no opposition to it. And we think that because it's very low intensity, it's consistent width and less dense than what was recommended by the comprehensive plan, and road access and services for the property are good, that, that this is an appropriate rezoning for this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that signed up to speak for this item.
Public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Vice Chair?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Motion is second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We are now at item seven. Motion is second. Motion is second for adjournment. Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?